Amy Natchantaitres, and let's have so Tom Wohan is called to order. Yesterday, I know we had a request to be able to reconsider the votes. That's where we left off, and then we decided to recess while, of course, the members continue with their dialogue. And so that's what had happened yesterday, at least that's the latest that we've heard. And I know that the Senator Esposito had went after that, of course. We would go right back to this morning's session then to then recognize the senator. Senator Esposito, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, that's correct. On the matter of Bill 20-33, I had made an amendment to the bill on page two, on lines 14 through 17, relative to the issue of equitable estoppel. And so there was objections that were raised and arguments presented on both sides of the issue. There was a vote that was called, and on that vote, it was one vote shy of passing. And so I had requested for a motion to, I made a motion to reconsider, and again, I got seven votes. And so at this time, I renewed that motion, but this time, make it a notwithstanding motion to reconsider the actions of the body on the vote that was taken to delete on page two, lines 14 through 17. And in deference to those that opposed my amendment, I would also request that they be given an opportunity, and I be given an opportunity, to re-present this entire issue, should that notwithstanding motion not be adopted.
So I just want to make this clear then. Right now, we just to reconsider the actions, of course, of the body, but how we voted yesterday. But it's not to do a revote immediately, at least that's my understanding, then, and to allow the other members to hear again what could be presented by the proponents, of course, of Bill 20. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. When one makes a motion to reconsider the action of the body, we're asking that the clock be, that we rewind the tape to right before that action took place. But I'm asking that we rewind the tape further to put us in discussion, so that this issue can be re-presented, and a vote can be taken, so that the members that are here this morning will have the opportunity to understand both sides of the issue. And I'm willing to do that.
Yes. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands exactly what that notwithstanding motion is. So hearing that object, hearing that motion, are there any objections? No objections, so we're good. Senator, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, colleagues. So my first motion on Bill 20-33, and let me begin by saying, I again want to, for the record, recognize the good work of our oversight chair, the sponsor of this bill, to want to truly reform how we procure for goods and services in this government. The issue that I raised, again, is on page two, lines 14 through 17, which is relative to the issue of equitable estoppel. For me, Madam Speaker, and colleagues, I'm absolutely process-oriented, and I believe in every process, you have to have prescriptive timelines and deadlines with respect to when these issues can be raised. Right now, there's the bidder, the losing bidder, has 14 days to file a protest if they believe that any part of that protest, any part of that procurement process warrants a protest. And so when this new bill is presenting a remedy to be resolved through an equitable estoppel process, it basically means any time that that 14 days is up, it no longer becomes a jurisdictional issue, but it becomes an issue of equitable estoppel, where that losing bidder believes that they may have won, or something was wrong with the procurement process, so they want an opportunity to agree with that. But the concern I have is when you no longer have this jurisdictional issue, you don't have any finality with respect to this procurement process. And I raised the same concern that was raised by not only government attorneys, but also by the Guam International Airport Authority with respect to this one provision. And so I asked that this section be deleted. I asked that if 14 days is not enough for a person to file a protest, then we can double it. We can make it 30 days. I just want to make sure that this is done in the context of a jurisdictional issue. And I know the arguments raised yesterday with respect to why this provision should remain intact is because what if a losing bidder is acting in good faith, or believes to be enacting in good faith with the agency, and on the 14-day, things don't go that person's way, and so they want to file a protest, but the time limit is gone, is up. And so I suggested that maybe they file the protest on the first day. But the other thing is, if we're going to be allowing a losing bidder to be engaging with that agency that issued the award, wouldn't that create a situation for the winning bidder to now file a complaint that the agency is consulting with the losing bidder, and not, not those that, not, not, not them as an, as, you know, as the contractor, as the bidder that won the award? And so I asked for reconsideration, because I got seven votes yesterday, and I believe if we think about this issue further, maybe our colleagues can understand the way I do, that having this provision through this equitable estoppel would really make it so that at any time after the jurisdiction time limit is up, that someone can file a protest. And what, what would that do for the government's ability to procure for the much-needed goods and services? And so I'll stop here and give opportunity to others, so that we can make a decision with respect to this particular issue. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senators. On the amendment, then, I recognize the vice speaker.
Madam Speaker, obviously, this isn't going to stop. So my only consolation is, is that I have the courts on my side. There has been a decision issued by Judge Lamarena on the issue of equitable estoppel in this kind of a situation. The United States Supreme Court has spoken several times on the issue. For me to try to explain the cases to the body would be irrelevant and useless. But even if we don't have it in here, case, statute, I mean, case precedent already has it, so we're protected, and I'm not going to fight it anymore. It's already going to be done anyway.
Mr. Vice Speaker, you're welcome. Senator Tomeda, and then Senator Torres.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, again, just as a follow-on to the retiring speaker regarding the court's views on the issue of equitable estoppel. I just want to read, basically, the position that was taken by Chief Justice Rehnquist regarding a case back in 1990, and it had to deal with the issue of equitable estoppel. And if I could just read this?
I just want to say, though, that if you can also provide a copy of that to the clerks as well, because you're reading?
I will.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, I will. That, and then also the, basically, the position that was taken by one of the judges in our local Superior Court. So in 1990, Chief Justice Rehnquist said, and I quote here, he says, "Federal courts have typically extended equitable relief only sparingly. We have allowed equitable tolling in situations where the claimant has actively pursued his judicial remedies by filing a defective pleading during the statutory period, or when the complainant has been induced or tricked by his adversary's misconduct into allowing the filing deadline to pass." This was the example that I gave yesterday about sitting down with the agency to negotiate, so it goes along with that. "We have generally been much less forgiving in receiving late filings where the claimant failed to exercise due diligence in preserving their legal rights. The principles of equitable tolling described do not extend to what is, at best, a garden variety claim of excusable neglect." So I think, in my layman's, basically, interpretation of what Chief, the Chief Justice was saying is, you know, if the individual has some good cogent reasons as to why timelines were not being met, then certainly, we need to, to, you know, accommodate that. And based, and in addition to that, another Chief Justice had indicated that really these time limits are really meant as limitation periods, so that when they say that you have 14 days to file, you know, it means you want to try and get it in around that window, not wait around, doesn't mean that you have up until 360 days. So it's really a limitation period, and, but the equitable estoppel principle allows you then to be able to show to the court why you were not able, you know, to come in until the 16th day, or whatever. And then, on the local court, I just want to basically quote from one of the judges "The law assists those who are vigilant, not those who sleep over their rights." So obviously, if a protester is working as diligently as he can to put together the information to support the protest that they are filing, 14 days may not be enough. But, you know, if it's somebody who's just decided, well, I'm going to go on vacation first, and then when I come back, I'll, I'll pull this wild card out of the deck and file a protest, I don't think the law was intended to assist those. So, you know, I, I would ask my colleagues, again, I would just for those, for the benefit of those who were not here yesterday, the two examples that I gave yesterday are real-life examples that happened here on Guam. One was in the case of an individual, because the law encourages that these conflicts be resolved at the lowest level possible, that then we sit down with the agency and try and work out an agreement. Now, the concern that was raised was that now the government is going to be sitting down negotiating with the losing bidder? Well, common sense shows that if you're going to be losing with the win, if you're going to be negotiating with a losing bidder, you better have the winning bidder in that same room also. And that was not the case in what happened in another example that I gave about buses that were put out to bid at the day of the opening. Everybody, you know, looked good on paper. Yep, it's going to have rivets. Yep, it's going to have escape doors and everything, and it was, and everybody had, met that requirement. And then the guy that was, that the bid was given to was the guy with the lowest bid. Well, it wasn't until 12 months later, when the buses came in, that then we actually had something to take a look at. Nope, it did not have the rivets that were requested. Nope, it did not have the escape door that was needed. So, you know, at that time, that's when that individual had basis to say, hey, I'm going to file a protest, because he didn't meet the bid requirements. And that's, you know, with, with, with the equitable estoppel, and then that whole thing just got messed up. You know, everybody's concerned that with this equitable estoppel, it's just going to draw things out. Well, what drew out everything, what really delayed things further was that the government sat down with the losing bidder, they made, came to an agreement, I'll give you three buses, you, I'll just give you nine, and then that's when the winning bidder, when he found out, he says, wait a minute, I won this from the very beginning, I won all 12. Now they're in court. Luckily, in the law, there's a provision for the lifting of an automatic stay. So again, we're concerned about, you know, people coming in, filing protests, and all that, it's just going to delay everything? That's not true, because the government has the option. If it feels that it would, that moving forward with the procurement is in the best interest of the territory, then the chief procurement officer can step in, lift that stay, and we move forward. Or the governor can simply step in, declare an emergency, and say, we need to have this procurement brought to a conclusion, lift the stay, move forward. And, and then, you know, so, so there's those provisions. So the equitable estoppel really gives the bidders, the vendors, that, that opportunity to be able to put things together and file a protest. So I would ask my colleagues to maintain the language of allowing for an equitable estoppel. Thank you.
You're welcome. Senator Torres, you recognize?
Confide, Madam Speaker, thank you. I am opposed to removing the section two of, of the bill, which would, which calls for the time limit specified for resolution of disputes arising under this section, including any administrative and judicial review provided in this Article IX, are not intended to be jurisdictional, but shall be subject to equitable estoppel. I believe that this is a very reasonable and important component of this bill to be included in it. I don't believe that jurisdictional time limits are sound if you are looking at preserving the integrity of the procurement process. And there's been fears expressed about the proposition, that the proposition that this issue of having equitable estoppel will, will lead to insurmountable obstacles to final resolution of procurement disputes. What we have to understand with equitable estoppel is that the threshold for asserting it is, is rather high, and there have to be certain tests that are met. It's not going to allow for the floodgates to open, and people to, you know, continually dispute and bring up things that are outside of the prescribed 14-day window. And what I want to point out to my colleagues is that when you're looking at equitable estoppel, as I mentioned, there are thresholds, and there are only two situations where it would arise. There have to be two necessary conditions to it. One, the government is acting in a proprietary, as in its proprietary, rather than sovereign capacity. And two, that the agent of the government is acting within the scope of his authority. In other words, the authorit, the person that is in authority has to commit acts that are harmful to the person, one of the bidders, and it also has to involve some sort of trickery and misrepresentation. So there's a fine line between when equitable estoppel is applicable, and where a regular procurement protest is applicable. And I would caution my colleagues, there's a lot of case law, both in the local courts and in the Supreme Court. Senator Ada read some of the, some of the comments made by Chief Justice Rehnquist, and also by Lamarena. And what we have to understand that, is that where we have fears of this leading to disputes that are unresolved, and the timelines being dragged out, that is clearly not the concern with equitable estoppel, and that concern is, is actually misplaced if we're going to attribute having, you know, subject to equitable estoppel versus jurisdictional. I think that that concern is misplaced, and I think that I would encourage my colleagues to revisit their concerns, and perhaps read through some of the opinions and decisions by the Supreme Court, Scalia and Rehnquist, and also in our local courts, I believe, Lamarena and Ampinko also had cases involving equitable estoppel and procurement protests. Situs Massey.
You're welcome, Senator. On the, on the amendment, Senator Sineklish, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I too rise in objection to the amendment, and I kind of wanted to clarify exactly what this amendment is intending to do. The language is currently written states that the time limits specified for the resolution of disputes arising under this section are not intended to be jurisdictional, but shall be subject to equitable estoppel. Now, what this basically means is that we're making it very clear that all the timelines specified in this bill are not going to supersede the need for us to act fairly and equitably in the dealings that we make with the bidder, or with the person who wins the bid. And so by taking this language out, we're basically saying that the timeline is more important than being fair, because that's what this particular language is clearly specifying, that the timelines in this bill, while they're intended to move things forward within a certain period, are not intended to be jurisdictional. They don't supersede the need for us to be able to address fairness as raised in the questions of equitable estoppel. So really, the question becomes, is 14 days, or 30 days, or however long we extend this protest window, is that window more important than us being able to always leave the window open for somebody to be able to make a claim that it wasn't being done fairly? We can extend timelines as long as we'd like, but the reality is that to make a timeline more important than the interest of fairness is really the ultimate question that we have to weigh here. And so the reason why I do not support the amendment is equitable estoppel, as talked about by the retiring speaker, has a very high threshold. You can't just go around and say that I'm pursuing a question of equity, and I'm asking everything to be halted as a result of this, without really crossing a lot of major thresholds. And so if we take this section out, we run the risk of basically saying, fair or not fair, too bad, 14 days passed, according to the law, we're moving forward regardless of whether it's right or wrong. And as the author of this legislation clearly pointed out, right or wrong, or fairness, doesn't have a certain window to be able to be identified, because sometimes, the wrongdoing, or the misrepresentation, or the unfairness can manifest itself at the very last minute. When I was chairman of the, of the busing situation that occurred in the last legislature, it became evident that that was an obvious problem, where a bid was provided, the winner of the bid said they were going to meet these specifications, but when the actual product was ready for delivery, those specs were not actually met. And the question becomes, is that fair? And the slippery slope that we put our people on, Madam Speaker, is anybody then, if we make timelines more important than equity, anybody can bid and promise the world, and deliver something far less, or, or substandard to what they, to what they were bidding for. And that's very dangerous, Madam Speaker, because it's, we're talking about buses today, tomorrow, we're talking about $100 million school, or a new detention center, or what have you. And our bidder is going to be able then to just say, well, you know, those timelines are passed, we clearly took out equitable estoppel, if you go back to the legislative record, so those timelines are more important than fairness. That's really what the situation we're going to be putting ourselves in by taking this, this language out. And the reason why, and I don't mean to speak for the author, but in my interpretation, the reason why this language is specifically included here was to make it very, very clear under the letter of the law, that while we are specifying timelines in this legislation, we by no means intend to make those timelines jurisdictional over the need for us to be fair, and the need for us to be able to have that trigger available for anybody who's able to come up and prove to the threshold necessary that equitable estoppel is necessary at that point in time. So we really need to be careful about amending this language out, because we don't want to make timelines more important than, than fairness, or the need for us to meet the obligations that are being specified in the bids that we're putting out. And this is, this is bigger than buses even. This has to do with, with anything that we bid out, and it could go up into hundreds of millions of dollars, and then what happens then? We really need to think about that. So this is good language, I think, and I think we really need to keep it here in the bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the amendments, is there anybody else who would like to speak on the amendment? Okay, so I'm going to allow for the mover then to close.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker and colleagues. You know, I'm of the belief that this whole reason why we're providing for this revamping of the procurement process is to make it fair, and to level the playing field. But is it fair to have a bill that provides for a protester's bill of rights? Is it fair to make, have a bill that makes it so that we're no longer concerned about jurisdictional timelines, and then under equitable estoppel, we can have this procurement process open-ended? I certainly appreciate the comments of all the individuals who spoke in opposition of the bill, and I'm not afraid to have those, those oppositions be aired publicly, so that the community, and that all of us can understand, why I believe that this bill, as presented, is not a level playing field, and it could really provide some unintended consequences from the government's perspective. The issue of Chief Justice Justice Rehnquist's statement where, with equitable estoppel, there is no time limitation period, but the way this bill is presented, it leaves it open-ended. And, and under the sponsor's comments, where under a declaration of, of the authority, or an emergency, and the stay can be lifted, that stay is also appealable. And then it's appealable to the public auditor, and then if they're not happy with the public auditor's decision, it goes to court? So are someone going to make me believe that, that this is not open-ended, and that there is an opportunity to, to make it definitive, prescriptive, have timelines? The example pointed out was something that was raised over a year ago, or a year after the award was given. So imagine in that situation, if we had equitable estoppel, Madam Speaker and colleagues, what would the remedy have been? If you're submitting a bid for a contract to which this government wants to issue, and there's this issue of uncertainty that equitable estoppel provides, what would that do to the procurement process, and what would that do to this government's ability to procure for the much-needed goods and services? You know, there are also other issues of how the procurement process hasn't been followed, and the one example cited with, a year later, the specs on those buses weren't, weren't what was, what was promised. Well, isn't there a remedy that should have been exhausted through the courts? Shouldn't there have been civil liabilities imposed? Shouldn't someone have been in trouble for making sure that that bidder conforms to those bid specs? So we cannot be legislating for non-conforming bidders, and we cannot be legislating this way, where in a procurement process, you must, it must be jurisdictional. If you think that 14 days is not enough, I even offered, make it 30 days. But we have to keep it a jurisdictional issue, so, so at some point, everybody recognizes that life goes on. And if, and if anyone was wrong because of that procurement process, then go to court and deal with those remedies through the court process, and, and get your civil liabilities done in that manner. But I ask my colleagues to consider, what are the ramifications to providing for an appeal through an equitable estoppel process after the jurisdictional timeline has lapsed? Then also, what happens if the chief procurement officer, or the director of public works, or the head of a purchasing agency provides for that stay, and then they're not, someone's not happy with that, there's an appeal process, then it goes to the public auditor, then ultimately, it goes before the court? And equitable, equitable estoppel is really a fact-finding process, in that although it's a very high threshold that has to be met, the courts will still have to wane on that, and you, we all know how those court procedures are very lengthy. And so really, are we providing for a level playing field, or are we making it so that this opportunity to protest is open-ended? I submit that that's what this bill does, and I ask for reconsideration again, and support, to remove that entire section out, lines 14 through 17 of page two. And thank you for the opportunity to close.
The amendment, as stated earlier, is on page two, lines 14 to 17, the amendment is to delete. There have been, there are objections. I'm going to call then, for those who are in favor of deleting lines 14 to 17, to please raise your hand, and leave it up, so the clerks can, can count. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. It failed. Senator Ada, on the main motion? Unless there's anybody else who would like to speak? So it's Senator Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd just like to make some closing remarks as to, you know, this is a, this was a lengthy bill. It, it basically made its way through this legislature over a period of about 13 months, two public hearings, four roundtable discussions, a unanimous vote by the legislature, a veto by the governor, and we're right back here again, picking up where we left off by addressing the objections. And so after going through all this effort, one has to wonder, what have we accomplished? What have we accomplished in Bill 20-33, in taking the first step toward reforming our 32-year-old procurement law, which really hasn't had much tweaking during those three decades? And just very simply, without getting into the minutia of all the changes that it makes, is that what's going to happen now, I believe, is that the is that what's going to happen now, I believe, is that the procurement process can be expedited. So the current law right now says is that when an agency needs to solicit for services or supplies and equipment, a bid is put out, or the, whatever the authorized and approved source selection might be, that's allowed by law. If then, the award that is going to be made is protested, then there are certain timelines that are put in place. And of course, the bill proposes that these timelines shall be subject to equitable estoppel. But under the current law right now, if I'm the losing bidder, and I protest an award, I have fourteen days to file that protest. That's in the current law, and that remains. Under the current law, the government has no time limit as to when it comes back with its decision. So it can sit on its decision for, until it's good and ready. Today...
Senators, can you please take your conversation outside? Thank you.
Today, the Bill twenty dash thirty-three, thirty-three, actually puts a time limit that government, you have forty-five days to justify why you rejected certain bids, or why you're going to reject, if you're going to reject a protest, you have forty-five days to do it. In addition to that, if the agency still does not answer in forty-five days, then the protester, the individual who filed the protest, can then file a demand letter saying, GSA, you still have not given me a decision on why you rejected my bid, why, you know, so, basically then, the government's going to have up to fifty-five days to do this. If, after fifty-five days has elapsed, and the government still hasn't responded, then that will be deemed as a rejection of the protest. Now, that individual can take it up to the next level of administrative review, which is to the office of the public auditor. And that individual has to file that within fifteen days. The public auditor, now, in their rules and regulations, they try to get a decision out within a sixty-day time limit. However, they don't really have full control over that, because, you know, motions can be made, it's an adversarial type of proceeding, so there's a lot of legal maneuvering that goes on. If then, the OPA decides that to uphold the, decides to basically dismiss the protest, then all the administrative review options have now been exhausted, now the individual can go and seek judicial review with the court. In addition to that, then, the bill allows the court to be able to take a look at this petition, this appeal, take a look at it and say, yes, there is something to this, we will sit down, and we will take it out for the full judicial review proceedings. Or, the judge can decide, nope, there's nothing to this, that's it, case dismissed, you're out of here. So, I think we have, in so many ways, in the bill, expedited the process. Now, there's a concern, that now that we've made this a little bit more vendor-friendly, you know, we're going to hamstring the government, and we're not going to be able to get our procurement purchases through. And that is not true at all, because there's a provision in the existing law, and still in there, regarding automatic stays, that if in fact, the procurement needs to be brought to conclusion in the interest of the territory, then the chief procurement officer can make that determination, and he can lift that stay, so that we proceed with the procurement. If that doesn't happen, there's still a second option, and the governor can step in and say, this is an emergency situation, we need to lift that stay, step aside, we're going to let this procurement go through. So to say that, you know, this law is going to hamstring the government and all that is really the farthest from the truth. So, I ask my colleagues to, you know, favorably consider Bill twenty dash thirty-three, and I think we've addressed a lot of the concerns over the past thirteen months, maybe I would even say fourteen months. And finally, we got to the point where when the governor vetoed the last bill, at least he established what the objectionable points were, and when we removed that, we have then definitely established what the target is that we want to shoot for. And so, Bill twenty dash thirty-three removed that objectionable language, and now we, I think we have then that target that we need to achieve for the first step in our procurement reform. Madam Speaker, before I close, I would ask that, I would ask two things. One, I would like to move that the vice speaker be made the first co-sponsor on the bill. And the second thing is that we allow the legal counsel to make technical changes related to style and format. I'll have to admit, the legislative council did review the, did review the bill, and there were stylistic changes that she had recommended, which I overlooked, and stylistic changes wherein, for example, a certain term should have been italicized, certain abbreviations were made, but it does not change the substance of the bill. So I ask that she be allowed to make those technical changes. Thank you.
So, we're going to do both of them at one time, I guess, is the first sponsor, co-sponsor is the vice speaker, and the second will be to allow then for legal counsel to do stylistic changes, nothing very technical or substantive. On those amendments and objections, so ordered, thank you. On the amendment then, on the motion, rather descend Bill twenty dash thirty-three to a third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Bill number twenty-two dash thirty-three, Mr. Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that Bill twenty-two dash thirty-three COR, as corrected, and I passed this out to everybody just this morning, as corrected by the primary sponsor, substituted by the Committee on Appropriations and Adjudication, and further substituted by the author on the floor.
So, on the motion then to accept this new version, right? Compared to the other...
Yes, please.
Okay, so on that motion to accept, you know, objections are ordered, vice speaker...
Thank you very much for accepting this new version. I'd like to move it to the second reading file and ask for an opportunity to speak.
Okay. Motion then to put a third reading to, and you would like to discuss, you may proceed.
Thank you very much. Madam Speaker, I want to apologize to my colleagues first about the fact that it's been, that the initial bill has changed and morphed so many times. And the reason for that is because on January the sixteenth, the District Court of Guam issued a order, or settlement agreement, and in it, they listed thirty-five things that they expected, and ordered that the government of Guam comply with within two-hundred-and-seventy days. Immediately after the court order was issued, I introduced Bill twenty-two. I announced at the time that I recognized that it was just a placeholder, and the bill originally, in its title, appropriated five-hundred thousand dollars, or authorized the governor to move five-hundred thousand dollars to be able to address the court order, for the specific purpose of having the court order, addressing and complying with the court order. When we had the public hearing, I announced that the reason that it was five-hundred thousand was just that I wanted to be able to get a bill in there, and I wanted to be able to have it introduced at the earliest possible date, so that I could have public hearings before this session, and to be able, to be able to address the court order in a timely fashion, because what the last thing on the court order, it reads, "The court further orders the territory of Guam and DOC to secure funding and to complete the repairs on the electronic locking system for units five, six, seven, and seventeen at DOC facility by September the thirtieth, 2015. Council for DOC has agreed to assist the director of DOC in preparing the presentations and requests for funding to the U.S. Department of Interior and the Guam Legislature." And so, when we had the public hearing, DOC came in, and so did General Anderson. And for the information of my colleagues, and also of the general public, the, General Anderson, in collaboration with the governor's office, they worked on an executive order, and they created two different task forces. One task force is being chaired by General Anderson, and it is the working task force to address the thirty-five provisions in the court order. The lieutenant governor has also, by executive order, created another task force, it's a Blue Ribbon Commission, to look at the long-range things for DOC. What's going to happen, or what is going to be at DOC after the thirtieth of December this year? The working group and this bill is just trying to address the thirty-five things that are in the court order that we have to comply with by the thirtieth of September, 2015. And contrary to what had been expected, or had been touted over the last year, the receivership, there would be no receivers, the court order was not ordering us into a receivership to build a whole brand-new prison. In fact, as I read, the court order only asked that the locking system in four of the units up at DOC be replaced and repaired. It didn't order that the locking system be repaired or replaced in all the units at DOC, it only had those four. And so this working group is just trying to address that. DOC has had a three-hundred-thousand-dollar grant from DOI to fix the locks, but when they did the initial review, they thought that it was going to cost three million to be able to replace the locks. And then there was issue as to whether or not spending three million for locks wasn't the best interest of the territory, or would it be better we built a brand-new prison? So there's those two tracks that are going at the same time, but I think it's imperative that we address the court order, so we're not made to have a receiver tell us to do anything else except for this. And General Anderson wishes to be able to go to the court and ask for a dissolution of the order, and dismissal of the case. When I introduced the bill for five-hundred thousand, I know that I was violating one of my own rules as chairman of budget, that in, if you're going to have an appropriation bill, you have to have a source from which it's coming from. It's just not five-hundred thousand from heaven, but it has to be, in last year's budget bill, where are you going to get the five-hundred thousand? So in discussions with General Anderson and Lieutenant Governor Ray Tenorio, we decided that there is a place within the FY-15 budget, from which we could get money to be able to, or at least has already been budgeted in FY-15, money to be able to address this need. As many of you who were in the last legislature and in the discussions of the budget, we did negotiate a six-point-three-million-dollar public safety vacancy pool. And it was to allow all the public safety agencies to have a pool from which they could fill whatever vacancies that they had in their departments. In discussions with the general and with the lieutenant governor, we realized that most of the thirty-five issues that were in the court order were actually things that could and should have been filled by the vacancy pool money. And so it was decided that the money, that the bill should be written in such a way as to authorize the governor to transfer from the public safety vacancy pool account to comply with the court order. In the bill that is now before us today, I didn't want it to be just a carte blanche authorization to the governor, that he can transfer any money from that pool for whatever reason that he wanted. In the bill, I placed two provisos to protect us, and to assure that it's spent just for this court order. In it, I have, and the, there is, has been no objection, at least, that has been stated to me from Adloop, because they've looked at this draft. There's no objection to a provision that I put in where it says that, "Prior to the transfer of any appropriation in this section, the Attorney General of Guam must review and concur in writing that such transfer is for the sole purpose of complying with the United States District Court Order dated January the sixteenth, 2015, in Civil Case ninety-one dash zero-zero-zero-two-zero." No appropriation that is transferred in this section shall be used for expenditure of private legal counsel for the governor of Guam. And no appropriation that is transferred in this section shall be used for expenditure of any contract or term exceeding one year, or for purposes that may result in extension, modification, addition, or changes order to any existing contract. So I tried to put as many protections in there, but the most important one was to make sure that the attorney general could attest to the fact that the amounts that were being withdrawn from the public safety pool were going to be for the specific purpose of addressing the court order. In, and so that's in Section One. In Section Two, I have to thank the attorney general, she noticed that when she came into office, that there was about seven-hundred thousand dollars left over from her FY-14 appropriations. And she requested a carryover of that surplus. And, but because this bill was to address the court order, I explained to her that the authority to carry over would again only be for the specific purpose described, let's see, in Section Three, which was to procure experts and consultants on the sole basis, or to comply with the court order. Again, I go back, and I'm trying to be as faithful to the original bill that was introduced, that was heard, and it was a bill to try to get as much money to be authorized, to be expended by Magat Lahe in Guam, to be able to address the court order. And even in this one, the attorney general, who was willing to use some of her laps, she wanted to be able to do other things in her office, and I said, I'll address that in a separate bill, but I will give you authority in this bill to be able to carry over and to expend money to hire consultants and experts to assist in complying with the court order. And the reason for that is because the general is going to need to have people to be able to assist her. In the court order, there are things about psychological services, there are issues of addressing medical issues, and so she wants to be able to have someone to be able to address those with her, and to be able to discuss with the doctor that's currently up there, and the psychologist that is currently up there, to be able to say, I have my own experts, I know that you say this is the way you want it done up at DOC, but my experts are telling me that in order to be able to comply with the court order, we need to do it this way. And so she would like to have her own independent consultant to be able to assist her, and so, Section Two and Three address that. Section Four, one of the parts of the court order was that within thirty days, we had to come up with a formulary for drugs up at DOC, and to also have a formulary on how to be able to deal with psychotropic drugs that are being taken by the inmates up at DOC. And in Section Four, I am suggesting that... And in Section 4, I am suggesting that the General Services Administration be authorized to procure medication directly from distributors for the Department of Corrections on the sole basis of complying with the court order, getting whatever drugs that they need to be able to fulfill the formulary, and to be able to present that to the court to say, "I have complied with your court order as it relates to having a pharmacy, or not having a pharmacy, or how the drugs are going to be distributed up there." And so that is, those are the three main things. The drugs up at the prison, the having sufficient nurses which the pool could use anyway already as it is, the experts that are necessary to assist in complying. And two, in Section 1, it was to expand the use of the vacancy pool. I know that when we originally passed the vacancy pool in the budget, it was for O1 or just for personnel. But in the amendment, as I've said forth in Section 1, this is to allow them to, if they need more money for the locks, then this is where we know we have cash. I did not want DOC or GSA to say, "Well, you can't sign this RFP because you only have $300,000, and it's going to cost $1.2 million for the locks. You can't certify that there's funds available." I want them to be able to know that there are funds available for whatever reason for this court order, if it means drugs, locks, or whatever, that they have that $6.3 million appropriation available to them to be able to tap into to address it. And then in Section 5, it's a reporting requirement, that we want the DOC to provide us with, provide you, Madam Speaker, with copies of the reports. They are made to provide to the court, that it comes to you so that you, we are advised of what it is that the court is insisting on or is deciding during the next nine months. And also, it requires that there be reporting, any time they take money from the vacancy pool, that they include, that they inform you within 20 days that they've taken X number of dollars from the vacancy pool to pay for the locks, and that the locks are for the four units that the court says has to be replaced and repaired. And all of these is to keep this legislature apprised and informed of what is happening up there, and our efforts to try to comply with this order so that we can address the court order and not have the District Court say, "We're going to impose a receivership." I think we've suffered enough in the past of it being alleged that we're not helping address issues. I'm hoping that this bill, I know many of you are shocked at how well I can play in the playground with other kids, but I'm learning, I'm learning. And I attend meetings on Mondays and Fridays for a couple of hours a day to try to figure out what needs to be done, but I'm committed to make sure that we do everything that we can to address the court order and preclude the judge from, on September the 15th, saying, "You've sat on your hands, done nothing, I've given you the last chance, and so now I'm imposing receivership." So I'm asking my colleagues to please join me in getting this legislation through at the earliest possible date so that the Governor and the Department of Corrections and General Anderson can have the necessary authorization and the necessary funds that they need to be able to address the court order. It's 35 things, 34 of them are health-related, personnel-related, psychological services-related, and only one is infrastructure, and that's the locks at four of the units. And so I'm hoping, and I'm confident that we're not going to spend the entire $6.3 million. I mean, the replacement locks for the entire prison was going to run $3 million. So the, I don't expect that the replacement locks for the four units is going to cost much over $1 million, if that at all. Oh, $1.6, I guess is, that DPW just said $1.6. And so it's going to be there, and they can now go up with the RFP in the next couple of days. So when the judge has a hearing, or the DOC has to file a report within a couple of weeks, they can say, "The legislature has helped us address number 14 on your list about funding. They've given us authorization to get into, issue this RFP for $1.6 million. They've given us authority to do all these things. We are working together, and we're going to get this resolved." So I ask my colleagues to please support Bill 22-33 as it has been substituted, amended, and corrected several times, and again substituted on this floor, to try to address the issues that have been presented by this court order, that we have only 270 days within which to comply with. Again, thank you very much, and I thank all the, my colleagues for their assistance in this effort.
On the motion, I have the following individuals, Senator Frank Uggan Jr., Senator Munia Barnes, Senator Frank Los Jr., Senator Torres, and Senator Rettig. So Senator Uggan Jr., you're recognized.
I'm allowed to announce all of them here.
And we do have a motion right now, which is, you know, the acceptance of, yeah, the placement of Bill 22 to the third reading file, and he spoke, and but you're...
Yeah.
Well, nothing's presented in a sense yet to divide the question unless you're going to amend certain sections, couple of sections, and then, actually what it is, is we need to hear what the motion is, the amendment is, and then depending on what the amendment is, then we can bifurcate exactly how the votes will go. But we don't have anything other than just right now the motion to place on third reading. So, but maybe...
Can I have one of the inquiry then?
Okay.
And ask legal counsel.
A point of inquiry for, from legal counsel?
No, I want to state the body and then ask legal counsel to, because there's a non statute of provision here that makes her, you know...
I think, a point, get me to a point of order for a second.
Point of order, Madam Speaker.
Thank you.
These sidebars should all be on the record.
Yes.
So if the Senator wants to rise to a point of inquiry, or a point of order, or to do anything, they should state that into the microphone.
Yes, but because if it's going to be a point of order, that will take, you know, precedence over your question to motion to bifurcate, so maybe, actually because there's so many different discussions going on there, I'm going to just take a brief recess first and find out what it is.
Well, we can, I can rise to a point of order, Madam Speaker.
Okay, then. So you're, but please state your point of order then.
My point of order, Madam Speaker, and I recognize, and it's not to take away from, and I appreciate, you know, the efforts by the author, but I think that it's just as important that we divide the question, we allow to divide the question, there are many sections in the bill, some of them can be basically standalone. And, you know, so that gives us the opportunity, recognizing the rule of the order and it's basically how to speak, I would appreciate that I would be able to be able to speak about Section 1, and then Section 2, and then Section 3, but not be limited because I stood here and spoke on the bill, that that's the last time I can speak, besides an amendment to be proffered.
I think maybe what you are, from what I'm hearing you say, rather than to divide the question, maybe what you're requesting instead is that we address this bill section by section the way we normally would do it, rather because...
If that so be the ruling, and you, ma'am, you know, so long as we have that opportunity.
Okay, let me take a brief recess.
Thank you.
Yeah, but we're going to have to, we're back into session. Senator, you speak, you're on.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker. Notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we suspend discussion on the matter of Bill 22-33, and instead resolve into the committee of the whole, and have our Appropriations Chair, Vice Speaker Cruz, chair the committee of the whole, and give him the latitude to bring anyone, whether it's Attorney General, the Director of Corrections, or anyone who he believes will be instrumental in assisting this body in the discussion surrounding this bill. So I make that motion at this time.
And there's no objections to that motion, so ordered. And because of the time, again, I'm, I know we need to set up and make phone calls, so...
Given that, I move that we recess till 1:30 PM.
Okay. So on that motion then to recess until 1:30 this afternoon, and allow our staff to set up for the committee of the whole, and allow the Chairman to also invite other members of the government to come in this afternoon. So we are in recess until 1:30.